Alex, if you want to take it over from here.
Okay. Um. Oh, right. Uh, well, Trish is here if you wanted her to do the Chairman's remarks.
Okay.
Um, sure. I just wanted to, the one thing I wanted to talk about was upcoming training. Spoke to Chris Eastman today about that annual state training that we had in the past at the county office building. We talked about a little bit of a different layout this year. Um, I know it's a little last minute, but we put on the schedule tentatively. March twenty-second and twenty-third, we'll be putting together some informational flyers. And we are thinking about having more localized training where we come to more centralized locations. We're thinking on March twenty-second to go to Preble um, and do a training on planning board overview from five to seven P M. I was gonna maybe give Jeff Griswold a call and see if we could meet at the at the highway, their new highway facility. Um, and then on the twenty-third, uh, do two sessions, one in Cortlandville from two to four. Um, that one on hot button land use topics. Uh, that would pertain more to uh, any solar or cannabis. Um, just more of uh, some more trendier things that are happening right now. And then from, and then follow that back to back with a seven, five thirty to seven thirty in Marathon on Seeker Review. So we'd have a couple of different time openings and be getting a little bit closer to some of the planning and zoning board members. So if anybody has any suggestions where it's kind of a different layout than has been done in the past. But um, you know, we're, we're gonna do an online registration process for people. So we get an idea of how many people are gonna be attending what sessions, uh, be able to plan accordingly and we'll be providing some food. So um, we're gonna see how this goes for this year and maybe curtail it and kind of get something down that works moving forward. If anybody has any. Yep.
I'm sorry. Minimum hour requirement?
So it's, it's four hours a year. Um, but again, that's, I think that's for local use for the, the local municipalities to track. I, I talked to Chris at the state about it a while ago and he said that the state, the state doesn't formally record that. Um, that's more on the municipality themselves. And uh, we'll be tracking who's there and we'll be able to give them certificates for the training. So we're offering two hours of training um, in these in-person sessions. And uh, we'll be providing the list of um, the virtual training opportunities as well. But we, we, we know that, I think that there's, no, so people are looking to come back and I think they have an easier time. And I talked to Chris originally, we, we also talked about having kind of a hybrid training session where we could offer it virtually. But have people able to attend in person. And um, he does a lot of these training sessions and he expressed that that is very difficult. Um, I think we, we even saw that in some of our planning board meetings. Um, so so we're gonna, we're gonna give this a shot um, and see how it goes in March and hopefully. I know it's kind of last minute, but we're gonna try to pull this together pretty quick and we're gonna be making some phone calls and putting some flyers together this week. So if anybody has any suggestions um, about locations, uh, we're like I said, are gonna try to reach out to Jeff up there in Preble. Amy, I don't know if you have any other ideas, but that was the only thing that came to my mind. Um, and then.
Either them or town hall.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um, if there's more chairs available, I'll be really curious to see too, how many people we start to see registering this. And I think in the past, we advertised to like large groups of area, we would send the advertisement to our regional economic development boards for them to solicit. So like to the Southern Tier Eight, they would um, really advertise it for us too. Uh, and I think for this year, we're just gonna keep it to the local municipalities. But we'll, you know, we'll call each of them individually, we'll send it to all the contacts at our municipalities. But feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call if you have any other ideas or suggestions. So we're thinking Cortlandville, Preble and Marathon.
Good.
And other than that, we've got the uh, you know, the constant laundry list of stuff, you know, website uh, changes and things that we're, we're looking into and, and uh, continuing to tick on. But um, if anybody has anything else, I guess I'll let Alex um, get into her G M O's.
All right. So we've got two of them this time, uh, one from Scott and one from Hartford. Uh, first one is a use variance in the town of Scott to build uh, two cabins on a property with an existing single-family dwelling uh, to use as short-term rentals. So um, the property is zoned ag and R one. But uh, the R one portion of the property is kind of just a sliver on the side. Uh, I think I included a map of that and I can show that to you. Uh, or you might have already seen it in the packet. But um, everything that's being proposed is on the ag portion. So we're just, we're gonna be using that, the ag um, restrictions. Um, and short-term rentals aren't allowed in ag. Um, I don't believe they're allowed in R one either, but uh, so that's why they are getting a use variance. Um. So, in order for a use variance to be granted, uh, the applicant has to show that the applicable zoning regulations and restrictions have caused an unnecessary hardship. Uh, it's pretty standard. Uh, and you can see how they're supposed to do that. Um. See. Um, general requirements for permitted uses in ag. Um. They uh, should have at least one off-street parking space per guest room and one off-street parking place per employee if they have any. Um, I'm assuming that the two parking lots that they are proposing will have at least four to six parking spaces. So that'll be good. Um. It also looks like they're gonna be having a new uh, curb cut onto um, Glenhaven Road. So they'll need a highway permit for that. Um, and then the um, the bigger thing with this project is the septic system. Um, so section fourteen point five says that no uh, septic systems have, can be within two hundred feet of Groudbrook. I did some measurements uh, just from, you know, what I can see on overhead. I didn't actually go over there. Uh, it looks like it's about two hundred feet away exactly. So just make sure, confirm that it is over two hundred feet away. Um, also because, also it has to get approval from the health department. Um, and then uh, because it's in the Groudbrook watershed, it also has to get approval from the city of Syracuse Water Department. Um, so they'll have to get that approval as well. And I've talked to, uh, I've spoken to uh, Soil and Water and Mike Ryan at uh, Environmental Health about this. Mike Ryan said they're not gonna approve it without the city of Syracuse anyway. So there's a, a double. Uh, make sure they check with them. And Soil and Water said they did not have any issues with that. In fact, I've got it right here. Uh, it's far enough off the creek and there are no brook trout in that reach. So it should be fine, assuming it's properly installed and maintained. Um. Another thing to note is that the rental units will increase the amount of refuse generated on the site. Um. And uh, because of that, the town should consider whether a dumpster or dumpster enclosure may be necessary on the site. So staff recommends approval of this application. Um. Uh, contingent on that the applicant show the town that applicable zoning regulations and restrictions have caused an unnecessary hardship. That the applicant apply for and obtain a one thirty-six permit from the county highway department. That the applicant proved to the town that no part of any septic system come closer than two hundred feet to Groudbrook. That the applicant obtained approval from the Corlton County Health Department for the private septic systems shown on the site plan. And any new well systems on the property. I spoke to the uh, the applicant and he's he, he has a civil engineer working on it, or, or an engineer, I don't know if it's a civil engineer, but uh, uh, he's not sure how he's gonna do the water wells, but um, it'll get approval from health. Um, that the applicant obtained approval from the city of Syracuse Water Department. That the town determine if a dumpster should be required on the property and compliance with Seeker.
Can I get a motion to accept staff's recommendations? Someone? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I'll make the motion.
Most. And a second, please.
I'll second.
And anybody have any discussion? I, I do. Hey, what's the, define the use? Is it considered short-term rentals? Is that considered a use or does that fall under business or transient lodging? Or is there gonna be employees there?
So.
Is the health de- Go ahead.
Uh, so I generally leave, cause i- it's a tough question that. It's, it's not an exact answer. Um, but I generally leave that determination up to the towns. Um, and the town uh, attorney decided that uh, it was short-term rental. Which if it's not expressly allowed in the zoning, it's not allowed. So that was their determination and I stick with it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Alex.
And we, we. Oh, go ahead Chuck.
Well, even like, um, is there any place in the town that allows short-term rentals? Any zones that permit that?
I don't believe so.
It's not allowed in residential, it's not allowed in ag. Is there any place that does allow it?
I don't believe so.
Virg- Virgil has a, an establishment that has cabins out back. And I kind of looked into that ordinance a little bit. Um, it's con- considered a commercial business. I believe.
Are those the, the places that are associated with? Was that the gatherings down there on three ninety-two? I think that's what that was.
Yeah.
Those were related to, yeah. I, I get the impression that these are a small, a few small cabins that they were looking at, like an Airbnb or VRBO um, type establishments just to just rent out to people for the weekend or the week. That was the impression that we got.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I could see development of this. This could go into a lot of little cabins up there and uh, I don't know, will they be serving food or like the bed and breakfast, you know, or?
One thing I want to note, um, and I, this is different from Ohio where I came from. Um. So in granting a use variance um, by the town, it makes that use, short-term rentals, an allowable use on the site. So they'll be able to have short, short-term rentals there. Um. I, I just learned that by um, the one last month with um, with uh, Suit Coat. Uh, cause that's why it wasn't a use variance there then. So.
Yeah, usually I'm not in favor of use variances. I'm not sure I am here either. I was wondering if there's other, if they allow it anywhere else. It sounds like it, these people want an Airbnb type operation on a big place, but once it's approved, like you say, what's to stop them from putting more into? I don't know. Um, but the hardship, how are they gonna prove hardship on something like this?
Well, it's, it's pretty well laid out um, in court rulings. Uh, there's four things they have to prove right there. Um, I can go over them if you want, but.
No, I know what the requirements are, but the problem is it's, it's hard to, to say like they can't get a return on their investment without doing this on that property, I would imagine. Uh, so I, whether they could actually prove it, but I know a zoning board of appeals typically don't care about that as much for small towns. So, but they're supposed to prove it, but it could be challenged if they just go ahead and let it happen. But uh, again, for this site, for two cabins, I personally don't have a problem with what they're trying to do there, but I just don't like the idea of having to get a use variance. I was hoping they could like residential would allow it and they could change the zone, but you're saying it's not allowed there either. So that's not gonna happen, obviously.
Alex, I have a question. This is Amy. You said that once um, a use variance is granted, it becomes a permanent use or allowable use. So does that mean they can add to it? If they, they have two cabins, does that mean they can add more cabins if it's allowable use? I thought a use variance was for a specific use in that only. I might be wrong.
That, that one is in Ohio at least. Um, it's basically the footprint of the cabins would be where it's allowed. And if it's expanded beyond that, it needs more. But based off of a lot of research, cause that confused me with Suit Coat. Um, because they wanted to, to change around the tanks and expand the square footage of that, that not allowed use. But the courts have determined that um, it actually creates it, it makes it an allowable use. So yes. I believe from what I've researched that they could put more on here, provided that the septic systems and, and, and all that stuff are all good. There wouldn't be a zoning problem.
Would each cabin have their own septic and well or a combined system or?
They're gonna have their own septic systems. He's toying with whether he's gonna have a combined well or a separate well system.
Yeah, I don't think he can do a, a, a combined well system without going through a municipal water system or commu- community water system having chlorination and all that kind of stuff. If each one had it on, he's probably okay. But I don't think we can put a, a general system in and have it as be a community water system that they have chlorination and, or U V or something set up for each unit if they did it that way. So um, at least I've run into that before at other places. So I doubt if he can do a, one big water system there. But either way, it, it's more of the issue of should it be allowed as a use variance, I guess, more than anything else, but then what happens in the future? Uh, I don't know. I think for two cabins of this site, I don't have a problem with it, but uh, cause it's plenty of room. They can keep the two hundred, they can do whatever they gotta do. It's just the idea, does that open up a a bigger problem for down the road if they want to put in like ten cabins or something like that?
Would it be reasonable to maybe add in the recommendations that any future development be returned for determination before approving it?
We're really not approving it, we're recommending. I mean, first of all, they have to come up, they have to come up with their um, financial hardship. See, when we say we approve it um, uh, with recommendations, it kind of looks like we're signing off on it and we're really not. Um. I mean, the main issue is the unnecessary hardship. And so to your point, Ann, if they come up with an unnecessary hardship, I don't know. I, I don't know. I, I just have an issue with it. I have an issue with use variances in general, but that's me.
Yeah. I think you could add a condition that they have to and I'm not an attorney, so I can't confirm this, but I believe you could add a condition that they would need to get a, an, like a, another, or another approval from the town, but not us. Um, the town may have to set it up here for that approval, but you can't, if that makes sense.
I think that personally, that's the only way I would approve this is guaranteeing that there is future approval for any future development going on here. I mean, health department approvals, water systems and parking and, you know, separation of the utilities. It's such a big lot that it's inevitable that two little ones going in at once.
Yes, they'll, they'll do more.
Looks like future plans would be inevitable that there would be more. We have one up the road from where I live out here in Soul and it's no longer working condition. It's the uh, Methodist Church Camp it was, but it was privately owned too. And it has fifty cabins in the woods. And you know, a lot of facilities and recreational areas and it's not a bad thing, but it's definitely needs to be governed a little bit. Does anybody want to make a motion to add a, an amendment to the recommendations that would be to before any fut- future development, new future development were to happen that it would be back to the town or county for review?
I'll make a motion for that, Ann.
Okay. Can I get a second on it?
This is Wendy. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of amending the recommendations as they are and adding uh, we'll let Alex kind of word it for us. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Yes.
Is that Paul or who's that?
Paul.
Did we get a?
Yep.
Enough votes to carry it?
Let me see. Yeah. We did. Carrie's.
Alex, could you maybe word it for us what we would be adding to those recommendations?
Um, I'll probably say um, that any further development of short-term rentals on the site um, be approved by the, the town. The town planning board.
That sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity for the members um, on this board, I think some of you have served for a while. Have you seen um, a lot of the short-term rental developments or seen this come up often? Or is it included in the zoning and like some rezoning including it normally? Yes. You know, may, maybe that, you know, I'm just wondering if when we send this, this recommendation back, that should be part of a bigger conversation um, with Scott. Um, you know, maybe ha- recommending that they look at, you know, formally including this in their zoning language.
I tried looking up, I tried looking up Virgil's zoning ordinance and oh, I don't have it up still. Like it was uh, it was considered a commercial um, in a commercial district. I believe that it had to happen. And then the governing of their commercial district guidelines.
Yeah. I, I think that that, that was like that old Rafters restaurant and bar that became the Gatherings. And it was like a venue and they had the little cabins behind it. And I know that's right down the road from Greek Peak too. But it seems like, you know, as these, these, these short-term rentals, these VRBOs are, are pretty popular now and becoming even more popular. Um, just if it's something, you know, that can be maybe, maybe some of the towns should start really looking at, including that. So where, you know, kind of outlining the areas. And the hard part is, you know, it is, it's in agricultural, it's in, you know, in districts, it's not just in commercial areas. These people want to get out into the woods. They want to get out, you know, in the more unpopulated areas, I think is, you know, the end goal for them. So just wondering if this, you know, as we send this back, there could be another message, you know? And I'm curious, Paul, you know, what your take is too, um, as opposing this, uh, you know, what, you know, just kind of what your thoughts are on it too.
I'm familiar with that area. Probably thirty, thirty-some years ago, I was on the zoning board of appeals. And uh, I found their, their zoning to be quite lax, I guess, for the lack of no better term. But there was a proposed development or, or property split up further down towards the lake and uh, and the problem was that the lots weren't big enough. And so that kind of fell through. But again, I know this, I lived almost adjacent to this area. Um, I, I, I think your question is the right one. That, that they should, they should take a look, Scott should take a look at, you know, zoning this and allowing this to happen.
Trish, I don't have had much experience with this at all, this is Chuck, but this Airbnb and short-term rentals, if you go around Skinny Atlas Lake right now, what is leading to, I think every cabin up there has short-term rentals for half the summer. And that's all residential zones and lake zones. And I don't know how they do it, but I know almost everybody up there rents out their cabins in the summer for a week or two. So I don't, uh, how you control that or not, but I don't think there's a single spot in that lake that doesn't do that, except for the guys that have more money than God.
Right, right. I mean, people are having to do it, right? To afford, you know, to keep those places. But you know, and the only way this is different is it's new buildings, they're keeping their current residential and they're adding a, a few small cabin. And um, you know, it's uh, it's, you know, it's, I don't think that this is uncommon or wouldn't be happening other places. Or, you know, you can see it happening more. Like I said, in the, in the more rural areas, it's just, you know, how can we reach those municipalities and have that communication of, you know, maybe you know, without having to do these, you know, cause I agree with you, Amy, the um, you know, doing these use variances, it, it, like you said, it's you know, maybe not really the best option. So maybe.
So I kind of agree with Paul. As Paul said, maybe they need to review their zoning ordinance. I mean, maybe they need to make some changes. I agree with Paul on that.
Right.
Cause use variant, cause I don't know any, honestly, of all the training, I, I don't know of any use variance that that is a hardship unless maybe you have something in the middle of, you know, but I, I don't see where this is a hardship and I don't know that. It, it just sounds like it's a moneymaker business to me. And so the, the term use variance kind of bothers me.
Well, the other question is to me, um, is there anything to prevent them from having more houses on that lot? Can they have more than one principal house on the lot as a residence? And then whether they rent it out or not, would that be prohibited or not? So I don't know how that law works out, but let's say somebody had a fifty-acre lot and wanted to put three houses on it. Is there anything to stop that? In the ordinance? And then if they rent them out or not, maybe it's for their family. I've seen people put in, uh, I had a client that put in a, you know, double wide on the lot with the father's house and the daughter's gonna live in it. Whether that's rented out or she lives in it, who's Whether that's rented out or she lives in it, who's to say?
Did they have a variance? Did they get a variance? Usually, I mean, it depends on the district. Usually it's only one, one house per, and it depends on the district again. Was it in a residential district or what?
No, I disagree, Amy. It doesn't. It depends on the ordinance and how it's written. Every town has their own ordinance and how they're written and what you can do and what you can't.
Right.
Oh, I don't know if that town had to get a variance for it or not. All I do is I work on septic for it. But all I know is that they're in, farmers in general will have five or six rentals all over the place. You said it's not allowed an ag, but like all the farmers have places they run out to people for their temporary workers and stuff. And they'll put trailers in, they'll do this, that, and the other thing. So.
So.
And I don't know what the rules are. So it depends town by town, I guess.
Yeah. Um, it looks like in ag districts at least, um, single-family dwellings, units, single-family dwelling units, it says. So I, I, you could interpret that as multiple. Uh, maybe. I don't know. I'd, I'd have to dig deeper. Uh, two-family dwelling units, farms and farm uses, roadside stands and seasonal dwellings are allowed.
There you go.
So if these are short-term rentals, they could be seasonal dwellings. I mean, it depends on your terminology and how you want to word your ordinance, I guess.
Right. Yeah, that, that's why people pay attorneys big bucks because of these little.
Well, it sounds like maybe they should look at adding a, maybe an amendment. And if they're going to use the term short-term rentals in their applications, maybe they could look into including that and clearly defining that in their, um, land use regs. Maybe, maybe covering, covering short-term rentals in their, their zoning. But maybe, you know, just thinking, maybe as, as we return this to them, we could kind of include that message and have that conversation.
I agree with that. I think, I think we should make a motion to amend that, those recommendations one more time and include, um, our recommendation that the town look at their ordinance and, um, you know, provide for any future building out of this sort.
I agree with that.
I mean, you can write it in your return, but it's not the recommendation. And Amy, you said, we're not really approving these, but the, in the staff recommends approval of this application. Yeah. So it does say we approve.
It kind of gives a message to the planning board that, okay, you know, county approves it. And, I mean, we're approved of conditions, but the first line that comes across is we're recommending approval. And they have, they have to jump through a lot of hoops and show a lot of, um, you know, hardships before they can. I don't, I, that's just, that's just my opinion. I know my experience with the boards is say, oh, the county sent it back, they approve it. So let's, you know? Some people just don't read. So it, it might be, um, it, it's, it's like you get a blessing from the county if you read the word approval. That's, that's my opinion.
Isn't that what happened with Burn Dairy on, um, Court Watson Street? They read the first line saying, we approve it, blah, 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 blah. Like Amy said, they, they read just that first line and everything looks good to go.
Alex and I have been working.
Possibly. That's a whole nother discussion that we should get into after this agenda here.
Alex and I, every time we, we communicate with the planning boards, um, and we, we sit down and we're going over things, that's, that's one of the main points that we try to express too, is when we get these applications and, and we return them, it's not, those, those recommendations are the pivotal point. It's based on these things being done, then we would approve it. Um, but these have to come first. And, um, I think that's also something that maybe we can, we'll make a footnote to mention that in our planning board training too, um, next month. It's definitely, you know, we, we talked to Chris about adding in a, a little bit of, you know, some local stuff that we'd like to touch on and we're, we're definitely putting that on the list.
Okay. That's good.
Just two, two little things, Chuck, the, the issue you raised about building a house. If you remember, we dealt with this in October in Solon where they wanted to build the, um, casita, um, there. So that, you know, they, we've, and it was a use variance too. I went back and double-checked because I couldn't remember, but it was, you know, another one of these use variances. We were looking at septic and all. So I think it's good, you know? Um, Trish, this may be another, one of those good hot button topics, um, for us to look at and work on with, um, the other boards is just, okay, we've got cannabis, we've got solar, we've got short-term rentals. Um, as, you know, as another thing that we're seeing. Because if you watch the news, um, Tompkins, it, it's really hitting Tompkins, um, and them trying to figure out what they're going to do. So we know it's going to start bleeding over into, um, into Cortland. Um, and it's only a hot skip and a jump. So let's see it. Good thing to put on the list. The other thing, you know, Trish, we might just to consider is maybe we ju- just change that first sentence, um, where it says, recommendation the staff recommends, and maybe sw- switch it around and put the clause first. Only upon completion of the following items would staff recommend? Or, you know, just making it really strong right from the get-go that, you know, you can't skip over the bit at the end where it says, you know, contingent upon. You put, you know, put it in that like right on top of it, that it's because you're going through these things, then we could recommend. Just something to change up the language a little bit might help make it a little clearer.
I agree with that.
That sounds like a better offering.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Would we need a motion to do that, to, um, do that in these reports that we have tonight?
Um, if they, if you want them in these reports tonight, I think yes. Because I, I, when you recommend approval based on my recommendation, I think I just take that text and that becomes the resolution. So.
I, I would see that as a Scrivener's issue. That's in the text that you control. We're really talking about the, the items underneath of it. So how you word that first sentence is, I would say is really up to you as staff. Um, that's just my thought on it. If you, if you take my thoughts, great. If you don't, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight you on it. Um, I, I think where we get into is are those numbered items beneath it. So anything above it is really kind of on you, however you want to word it.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I, that's probably more true. I don't know.
Plus, we wanted to include Amy or Tricia's, um, recommendation of, um, suggesting that they might review their zoning ordinance to look into the situation.
We could have a
In that case.
We can have a recommendation that says that the town consider reviewing their zoning regulations on uh, short-term rentals. So it doesn't prohibit them from approving or denying this. It's more like a note, you know, that you consider this.
I will make a motion for that additional clause to be added to the recommendations for this entry.
I'll second that.
And we, second, okay? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposition? I say it's a go.
Does anybody else, um, have any other, does anybody have any issues with it? Um, you know, Emma, Wendy, Lori, you know, Chuck, any of you guys mind if we change that verbiage? Or see any downside to us changing that verbiage in our reports? Um, to kind of emphasize those recommendations before they approve?
I, I like that recommendation right there.
I think it's a great point to bring up just because some people see that green light and then they just think that that's it and that's their green light.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I think that's a reasonable way of going about recommendations. I think Bo has got the right idea there that maybe if we worded it slightly differently than we recommend, it's like only upon review of these things then, okay? So that's, that's a good way of doing it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Right. We'll plan on doing that.
Okay, so we made a motion. Now, all those in favor of accepting the amended staff's recommendations?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so Carrie.
All right.
Moving now?
That last one, um,
Yeah.
This is a zoning text amendment, um, in the town of Hartford for the purpose of advancing and protecting the public health, safety and welfare of the town of Hartford by creating regulations for the installation and use of solar energy generating systems and equipment. Um, I refer to this as a zoning text amendment, um, because they're amending their zoning code. This is actually a new solar law. They have not had a solar law, a solar law before. Um, this is an amend, they're amending their zoning to add a section called, that, that regulates solar. So, uh, we kind of, uh, we decided to, um, kind of summarize every section. Um, that's why they're bolded within here. Um, so section twenty-four point one, um, it's chapter twenty-one, section point one, I guess you could say. Um, it's basically what I already said. It's just the purpose statement, why they're doing it. Twenty-four point two, twenty-four point three, uh, just the definitions and applicability. Um, I didn't find any, um, any conflicts there with the main, the main zoning definitions. Um, in fact, there's a couple that are duplicate, but they're the exact same definition. So it's all good. Um, the proposed amendment separates solar facilities into non-commercial and commercial. Um, for non-commercial, um, it's basically an accessory use. Uh, it's treated as such. Um, and that's in twenty-four point four. It has a couple extra restrictions, but essentially it just follows the same rules as a shed. Um, then you have commercial solar energy systems, um, which are the, the big ones that people are more concerned about. Um, that's going to require a, a site plan review and a special use permit. Uh, the special use permit is kind of new, uh, introduced in this law specifically for, uh, solar. The site plan review they had is just the normal site plan review. Um, so twenty-four point five, um, kind of shows the requirements for the issue of the site plan review portion of the, of the proposed solar. Um, twenty-four point six kind of creates that special use permit and how it works and designates authority and stuff. Uh, twenty-four point seven outlines the requirements of the special use permit. Um, so just to, to back it up, the, uh, site plan review is done by the planning board and the special use permit is done by the town board. Um, so it's got to get approval from both. Um, and the planning board does, reviews the requirements in twenty-four point five. The town board reviews the requirements in twenty-four point seven. Um, and there's also in twenty-four point seven, it mentions bringing, uh, bringing it up to county, um, pretty much just requiring it because it's probably going to be required anyway. Um, however, they kind of worded it like the applicant would need to fill out and refer it to us when the town needs to do it. So there's a recommendation in there that they, they changed that up to show that it's the town that needs to fill out the application to fill it up, to bring it up here, not the applicant. Uh, we need to have the town refer it. Um, sections twenty-four point eight and twenty-four point one four, um, kind of just deals with permitting and inspections and, and the authorities there. Um, then twenty-four fifteen, uh, outlines the decommissioning plan. Uh, they have to have a decommissioning plan done before approval. Um, and just all the, the requirements of that plan. Um, twenty-four sixteen gives the town board the authority to grant relief from any requirement. They can, they can waive any of these. They just need a, a special, um, approval from the town board. And twenty-four point one seven requires that the applicant adhere to all state and federal rules and regulations. Um, it's considered a type one under seeker, so they've got to do all of that. Um, the town itself would have to fill out the long form because they're the applicant. Um, so, and, um, thank you, Wendy. Um, I, it, we, you know, we had three people review this in our office and somehow we missed, uh, this little paragraph here is actually from a different approval, um, from last.
Subdivision.
Yeah. So it's actually supposed to say that staff recommends approval of the zoning text amendment for the purpose of, of that. Um, so, and that is conditioned on that section twenty-four seven is changed to only require the applicant to complete, uh, seeker instead of the seeker and, and our form. Uh, and that a provision be added requiring the town, the town refer both the site plan review and special use permit to the county planning board as required by General Municipal Law two thirty-nine M. Uh, then compliance with seeker.
And a motion to accept staff's recommendations? Please?
This is, this is Wendy. I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second, Chuck.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question for Alex. Um, so they have a planning board, right? But the, it, so the town board for the purpose of solar makes the, um, the decisions, right? They, they do this review. I mean, do they, they really, do they do it on their regular? And, and, and if they need, I think I read something about a variance or something here. So if there's a variance, it needed like a private property. So would it go to zoning board or does a town, does a town board make decisions on anything that has to do with solar? Leaving out the planning board or, or zoning board?
So in order, so the app, an applicant wanting to put a, a commercial solar on, on a site, um, they would have to apply for both a site plan review and a special use permit. Uh, site plan review would be applied for, to the planning board and the special use would be applied to the town board. The town board can't approve the special use permit without the site plan review being approved by the planning board. They, they're not allowed to go forward until planning board is done. And I believe it would be done during their regular, um, town board meetings. They, they could call a special meeting, um, but it's probably.
Does the town board automatically, um, approves a site plan reviews? I mean, special use permits, is it their ordinance anyway? Or is that just special for zone, for solar?
Special use permits are not a thing in their zoning code right now. Um, special use permits are created in this section specifically for this section.
Okay.
Yeah.
And does that apply to anything now or just only for solar?
Just for solar.
It's only specific to solar?
Yeah, just for solar.
Okay. It was, it was a little bit confusing. Okay.
Yeah.
I did look up the zoning on this for Hartford and I thought it was contradictory in the road, um, setbacks. It's a ag district, correct? And then regular setback for an ag district is three, thirty to fifty feet depending on the use. But if it's a use for public utilities, it's a hundred feet setback from the road. I really don't like seeing these solar systems right up next to the road. There's so much land out there that could be used for that and still allow road frontage, you know? So I think that was a little bit, um, contradictory to what the zoning says. allow road frontage, you know? So I think that was a little bit, um, contradictory to what the zoning says. That was article twenty-four point five A, number nine. You were to scroll down to number nine. No solar collector shall be closer than fifty feet from the boundary line of any public street right of way or roadway.
I think the key word there is public utility. Um, again, preface, I'm not an attorney, but, uh, I think this would be a private utility. I, I think would be the difference. It could be contradictory. Again, I'm not an attorney, but that, that was my, um, thought.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't, it could be considered a public utility. I don't. I, I can't prove that.
My only other concern was, and I, I wrote the town of Solon's solar energy law and it was a big thing to cover your butt for decommissioning. And in the event that they failed to take care of the decommissioning, there was, they do provide a liability insurance for a million to two million dollars, but it specifically states that covers personal injuries, death, property damage, auto coverage, and workman's comp. Um, abandonment on section twenty-four point one five F cost, um, talks about costs of covering for decommission and they're doing a lien on taxes or versus a letter of credit. It just didn't seem it was strong enough to support the cost of decommissioning. But that's my input on that itself.
I, I'm not a lawyer, Ann, but the letter of credit sounded pretty strong to me. But again, I don't know how that works versus bonds and other stuff. But maybe against, I don't know who wrote it for them, but, uh, I've never seen a letter of credit thing before, which sounds like a pretty strong, um, piece of monetary stuff that they can control. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a lawyer either, but it sounds like just as good as a bond or something else they might provide.
Yeah, that's the way it was written in our town of Solon's ordinance was a bond was provided. But yeah, I'm not sure what a letter of credit is either and how strong that is or how.
I think that requires the, the person doing the thing to have that money in the bank or have it available and then maybe, I think that's stronger than actually a bond. I don't know that, but, uh, I think they have to have that money available for a bank to issue a letter of credit.
Well, I'm sure the town has looked into that legally, so that's all I have.
Yep.
I have a question, Alex, and the GML referral.
Yeah.
There's rules on GML referral that require it to be within a certain distance of state or county, et cetera, roads. Does this supersede that? That no matter where they do a project here, they still have to submit to the county? Or is it going under GML rules that, you know, a certain distance of boundaries and roads and stuff? Can, can you even do that?
Um, so as for requirements, um, I don't know if this would always be required. But, um, towns are always allowed to refer it up to us. Um, that's, that's something that I tell towns all the time. Even if it's not required, you're, you're allowed to put it up to us, even, you know, if it's contentious or it's big, it's, um. As for requirements, I'd have to double check. Um, I believe there's, I don't think that would apply. I, I'd have to read into the law more specifically, but I think it would just be if it's within five hundred feet of X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, I don't think when I read the law, I mean, I didn't read it carefully. It just said refer to the county, but your recommendations are talking under GML rules. So I don't know, um, which applies, but whatever. If you want them to refer those, just make sure it's covered under whether it's GML requirements or not to do that. That's what we want to have happen or they want to have happen.
Yeah, and, and I, I worded it, um, uh, in compliance with that, with the GML two thirty-nine M. Um, so they can, a- as long as what they put in, is it something in compliance with that, I believe then, I believe they could just say, you know, if that requires it, then, um, if GML two thirty-nine M requires it, then it's referred instead of always. I believe that leaves room for them to do that. Yeah, it's. I'm not an attorney.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure if they want to refer it all the time, that it gets referred.
Yeah.
Well, if it's just GML, that's rather than your recommendation, which state under GML, which I don't know if theirs did or not. So I don't.
The intent was they could do either way. That was the intent, whether I achieved that or not.
As long as that, that's understood. Okay.
Yeah, that, that was my intent.
I had a question, uh, for you, Alex, on this, um, and it goes to the definition. What separates commercial versus non-commercial? And they seem to be using this threshold of two hundred kilowatts. Um, but the question that I have is two hundred kilowatts, what? They seem to be missing like per hour, per day, per week, per year. A two hundred, two hundred kilowatt per hour system is like seven hundred and some panels. It's huge. It goes over the top of like a, um, it would go over the top of like a giant warehouse or something like that, which just doesn't seem to be what, what is intended here. It seems very confusing as to two hundred kilowatts defined as, as what? I mean, I, I could see, you know, them wanting to say, for example, a large farm where they wanted to put it on their barns to be able to help supplement, you know, the, their electricity usage and they want to have a threshold that allows them to do that, but I, this two hundred kilowatts just isn't clear to me what that really is meant to be. Um, and what, where does that threshold get divided? Um, so I, I, I know you don't have the answer because it's not, you, you didn't write it, but that would be an area where I think it just needs to be clarified. Um, because there was a lot of, to my mind, a lot of ambiguity in that number and what does that mean?
So my assumption, and then you know what they say about assuming things, but my assumption was that it refers to the nameplate generating capacity. I don't know what that is. But my assumption was that was, um, that that was where that came from. Um, but you're right. I don't really have an answer other than that.
And imagine non-commercial systems going up to one hundred and ninety-nine kilowatts.
And, and I think it's, it, you know, that's one of the things in there. Um. I think the other part of that is a solar energy system that primarily produces energy that is fed directly into the grid primarily for off, uh, off-site scale or consumption. Or any, any energy system generating that much. I think that's the key.
Well, and that, and that's what seemed to me to make the most sense. So why then add this extra thing that just is about capacity? If you're, if the purpose is you're generating it and you're going to sell the energy to the grid, that's commercial. I think we could all easily say, yeah, okay, that's commercial. Um. And how much you sell, does that fundamentally matter? I, it, it seems like a, an, an odd extra little thing that they've added there that is tickling my brain. That seems odd, but.
The, the only thing that I can see where that might apply, um, it's a very specific, but if you had a large facility, um, that, you know, that, like a factory or something that had a solar farm next to it that didn't sell to the grid, it just powered the factory. It is very specific, but that's my best guess.
Might be a requirement by the, um, the utility company that handles it, that they won't, you know, it has to be two hundred kilowatt minimum before they'll start purchasing it from you or something too, I wonder. Anybody else have anything?
And I, I think your point about the setbacks on the road is really important. And I've just kind of been reviewing it as well as we've been talking. Um.
Mm-hmm.
So does, does any, I, I could definitely.
Smart.
To. Feel like that's a thing that should be addressed in our recommendations?
I would like to see it.
Yeah.
That, again, we're just recommending that they review that section that there might be a discrepancy between what they call out as their, um, public utilities versus the set, normal setback for a residence or something else.
I think, I think I'd rather CS recommend they review it again and take a look at it again than they have an issue with it. If they have something developed and they've got panels fifty feet from the roadway, fifty feet is not that far. Um, you know, when the highway boundary, you know, is twenty-five feet from center line, you know, it's, it's not that far.
No, I agree. Well, can we get a motion to amend the recommendations? And add a motion to review their setback requirements for their zoning law?
I'll make the motion, Ann. This is Lori.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Amy. Amy, I'll second it.
All those in favor of accepting the amended recommendations?
Could we?
Aye.
Oh.
I, I was gonna make a comment. We're fine as two hundred kilowatt thing. I mean, should we have something in amendment to make sure that they know what they're talking about versus kilowatt hours versus kilowatt is, I don't know enough about it, to tell you the truth. But Bo, what, what's your comment? Should we add that recommendation? They clarify that or also?
Yeah, I would like to, I would, yeah, I would like to see that clarified if we could add all of that into clarification of the setback, review and clarification of setback requirements and review and clarification of the two hundred kilowatt capacity question. And then Alex, if they ask, well, what are we saying? You could give them more detail, but if they could look at those two things, I think that would be great. At least go back and look at it. They may tell us, I don't care. We're not gonna listen to you. Fine. At least you've looked at it, but.
Yeah, we could just say that, that they review it and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would that be okay with you, Lori? You made, you made the, you made the motion, Lori. Would you accept that amendment?
Yeah, yes, I would.
Thanks. Thanks, Chuck.
Um, Alex, I have the article twenty-four point five A. Um, subset nine is the setback reference there. I'm not sure about the kilowatt one.
Yeah, that's, it's in definitions. I, I know where they both are. Put them in.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think that not just nine, maybe Ann, if it's okay, but, um, you know, eight right above it is a fifty foot, you know, no closer than fifty feet from non-participating, non-residential property lines. But if you have a neighbor that has a big field, you know, and is ag and isn't residential, um, you know, they might not really appreciate solar panels fifty feet from their line either. So, um, you know,
Mm-hmm.
Maybe leaving that a little more generic.
I think I read in their ordinance too, if there is no determined, uh, setback for an area that they measure it twenty-five feet off the road and then another twenty-five feet, or maybe it was fifty then too, but they really didn't even have an established line from the center line of the road. So they were, there was an area in their own that they didn't have fully, um, determined what setback requirements were, so.
Maybe we could, um, add the official highway boundary. I mean, they have to, when, when they get that property surveyed, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they'd have to delineate where the highway boundary is, uh, which is, you know, um, which maybe they could clarify that.
Mm-hmm. I guess we wouldn't want to recommend it. It would just be unsightly to have them right up next to the road.
So what if, what if we, uh, recommend that, uh, in that recommendation kind of outline that the, um, that they, that they review the setback requirements and designate the highway, I think they call it, the, um, the boundary line of any public street or roadway. Um. You know, I guess that, that could be the highway, the highway boundary. So I don't, I, I guess we probably don't need to clarify that, but.
But would it still be there, there thirty to fifty feet or there fifty feet is what they're specifying, right?
Yeah, fifty, fifty feet from boundary line of public street or roadway.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I was hoping it would fall under the public utilities and be more like a hundred feet away.
Yeah.
I, I consider these public utilities. I mean, if it's a big grid system that is serving the public.
Well, and, and if it is considered a public utility, the more restrictive regulation applies, so it would be a hundred then.
Uh-huh. But in their law that they are writing here, it only says fifty.
Right.
So we should refer back to their own regular zoning text and say there's a discrepancy between that and your setbacks.
Yeah, what, yeah, why is that, why is there that difference? It doesn't make any sense.
So they're saying basically if it's a big facility of any sort, whether it be solar or whatever, they want those setback further where if it's a house, you know, it can be thirty to fifty feet. The, it says thirty, then it goes a category up to fifty. It's a little more intense building project, you know, but then the hundred feet is public utility and, you know, larger scale is the way I read it.
May, maybe our recommendation could just be a generic that they, they review or, um, reconsider the required setbacks. Um. And just leave it kind of generic if everybody agrees. So they could.
That's probably the best we could do.
Unless, unless we want to pinpoint the exact spots, um, you know, which I'm not opposed to either. We can, whatever you guys want. Trying to.
May, maybe Trish would just, yeah, review them, but make sure they're in compliance with their general zoning ordinance and there's no conflict between the two.
Hmm, yeah. Great point, Chuck.
Refer to the general zoning as well.
Yeah, I would say so. I like that we record these sessions now so we can go back and listen to this again, right, Alex?
Yep, I, I, I've just stopped trying to write all this. I'm just gonna review the footage and that'll make it.
And that's smart.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any comments or concerns? Well, how about we call a vote for all those in favor of the amended recommendations?
Aye.
Can I get?
Aye.
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 Sean Franklin wasn't present.
Anybody opposed? Okay, sounds like you're. Okay, sounds like we're, we've amended them.
Okay.
I don't have any announcements other than our next meeting date is March sixteenth.
I, I have more.
Hopefully.
And we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
You're okay. I forgot I had it too. Um, returns, um, as you can see, they're a little different now. Uh, so I think we have four of them. Yes, we've got four of them this month. Um, so taking comments from last time and, and just reviewing it, we kind of made it more similar to the foreview, but still definitely not the full review. Uh, try to keep it to about a page. Um.
We, we did this after we talked about when the letter goes back to the municipality, they even, you know, get a better idea of what the original uh, uh, request was that came through.
Yeah.
So before they were kind of generic and we felt like it might be, this could clarify some things for those who are getting it back.
Guidance. Yeah. Um, so the first one uh, is a uh, area variance in Preble. Um, this is for a proposed storage building right here. Um, I get into more details, but essentially um, it's a very skinny lot and they don't have the side yard coverage. Um, they can't unless they make the bu- building really skinny. Um, second one is also in the town of Preble. Uh, this is an area variance as well for kind of a uh, carport, I believe, car garage for a garage right here and uh, Fulmer Road right here. This is the end of Fulmer Road right here. Um, it just dead ends right here. Um, another one, third one in the town of Preble, uh, lots happening in Preble. Um, this one is a minor subdivision. Um, they've got a property right here. Basically, they're splitting it along the road so that there's a parcel here and a parcel here instead of the parcel being on both sides. Pretty, pretty basic stuff. Uh, and lastly, in the town of Solon, we have a minor subdivision. Um, and they're looking at subdividing it right there to sell off. I believe this is the part that's being sold off. So questions I can answer.
Which part is that that's being sold off on the Solon one?
I believe it's the proposed parcel bit. I, I don't remember fully, but I believe it's that one.
And is that showing, where's the subdivision line?
It's the squealy line.
The squiggly line. It looks like wooded area, maybe. Okay.
And there's contingencies on there that they have to get um, an actual uh, an actual uh, surveyor to, to do it before its final approval as a subdivision, but.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on any of those? Concerns? Okay.
So now we're up.
Next meeting. Yeah, for next meeting, March sixteenth. Let's just hope uh, the soup co- ongoing fire is under control at this point.
I'll hope.
Yeah, somebody just sent me a picture. It's really a lot of smoke.
Yeah. Yeah, somebody said they want to, the actual fire.
I just left the county office building on the way home and it was uh, it was billowing over the city already while I was there, yeah.
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 So stay tuned to the invite, everybody, for the municipal training coming up. And please share it um, with everyone that you kind of work with or have in your municipalities.
Thank you. Urge those small municipalities to partake in that. They just kind of overlook it, but stress that it's, should be required, you know? A lot of them are not trained at all and go years without training.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of new members on, on a lot of the planning boards that we've been talking to and in communication with, and I think they're hungry for some training. They want it, they want some information and some guidance. So, and we're hoping that by going more to the municipalities, like getting in their area, we'll get better attendance. So it's not, you know, like coming into the this building, where to go or, you know? Um, so we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Push up.
Cool. How about a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Okay, everybody. Have a good month and see you next month.
See you next time, guys.
Thank you. You too.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you for the training.
Bye.
Yeah, yeah.